You have about ways that we could support you in recruiting and retaining volunteers. Scott, do you want to add anything?
It would be helpful. I've been on the commission now. Gosh, I think it's coming up to almost a year. But it'd be good to know where we sort of been, where we think we're going. You know, increasing, we recommended the town increase the discounts on property tax, you know, to the state limit, which they approved, which was great. But I can't help but wonder, and I'd love to hear from everybody, or maybe not, you know, it happens all tonight because it's kind of just a discussion. But is there more that we should be thinking about as a town to, for the future sustainability and effectiveness of the system? You know, and are there things that we, you know, should sort of brainstorm about? How to help with recruitment, retention, and just overall effectiveness as we go, you know, into the future. But maybe this is a road that's been traveled, you know, but, but I thought I'd, you know, Karen was kind enough to put it on the agenda because I think, you know, could be something worth talking about.
Okay. I think. I think moving forward, I think what we did over the last, I think the board of selectmen took it up last month or like a month and a half ago was vote and approve the tax abatement increase, which was, which was a big helpful, and I think that's a recruitment retention tool. And I think there's other things we do have that are, that are in place that are working well right now. But I think it's a conversation that we have to think about, and it's not a bad topic to talk about, but I think I just need a little more time to figure out what else that would be beneficial to the association, to the town, and to the department to recruit or retain more people. I mean, if that's definitely a discussion we want to have, I mean, we'd be more than happy to look into it and let me think about it and let me come back next month and maybe with some ideas or none, but at least we could talk about it. I mean, it's, it's a good thing because we've never really discussed it.
You know, couple of, I worked for an organization my prior life where we had two sort of retention recruitment types of things. And, and, and one of them was like, like the tax abatement residency benefits, we had a down payment assistance program. And, you know, that, that really was powerful. And then we also had educational incentives, you know, that sort of brought the family in, you know, scholarships for the children of volunteer firefighters. I would imagine our spouses in the volunteer probably work harder than the volunteers, you know?
Actually, one, talking about, talking about all this, one thing that we have talked about in the past, which might not be, which would actually be a pretty good thing. So we do have a tax abatement that we just went through again and revamped. We do have like a bond program, which used to be a US savings bond program. Rich, you probably remember this when you were in.
Yeah.
And then it transitioned out of US savings bond because it was way too complicated, too much paperwork. It went more to a, just like a, it went to like a money mutual account. It went to, so you would, we have a financial advisor and basically everybody gets, depending on the number of years, the money gets divvied up between the people that are eligible to make their quotas. And it goes into that account. But one thing that might not be a bad idea, which I would actually entertain looking into, which would be good. And not everybody would actually want it would be more of like, if we can, if some of these guys could tap on maybe to the, and pay for it and not get it for free, but pay into like the town health insurance. So the people that are paying for health insurance, maybe they can get a better rate by going with a group policy with the town instead of paying individually as a volunteer firefighter. And don't get me wrong, I appreciate that, all, what all the boards and commissions do, but what the volunteer firefighters do, it's a lot more demanding and a lot more time than meeting once or twice or three times a month. But that might be a good incentive to offer because not everybody has that. And it's not like the town would be fronting any costs, but the individual firefighter could pay into it at a reduced rate of what the town pays and bring them along. Now, I know there are some, it is problematic because they're not employees of the town. But if we could do something like that, or even if a volunteer firefighter gets hurt, maybe we look at a short term or a long term disability program. Like an app program, which I think would be a great thing also. Over the years, we had some issues and that would, that would put minds at ease as firefighters that if you do get hurt on the job, at least you're covered. We have a lot of, we also have people that in the department that are self-employed that don't have that type of insurance also. So that might be, that might be a good thing to look at. Those are just some of the ideas I have, but I want to really look into it and maybe report on it next month.
Yeah, those are some good ideas to get us started. So we'll just kind of keep this as a running agenda item. So thank you for your continued ideas and reaching out to your association and finding out what ideas they might have as well. I do want to say welcome, I should have said that first, to our new commissioner, Rich LaRico. We're very glad to have you. And I also want to just say, welcome back, Stephanie. I'm glad to see you over Sean's shoulder there. And we're glad to have you with us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much. Good luck, Rich. Good to have you on here.
Good to see you, Stephanie.
Should we, I don't know, should we go around and introduce ourselves or does Rich know everybody?
Sure, we could, we should do an introduction.
Okay. You start. No, I'm just kidding. All right.
I'm showing, I'm showing Roland the fire chief. He already knows that, but.
All right. And does he know Ted and Joe and Nate?
Well, go right around.
Yeah, I, I, I know, I know, Rich. I was at his house a month or so ago for fireworks. Yes, I know from a long time ago.
And I was at his house with Nate that day, the day of the CO call. I was with Nate.
Yes, that's right. And Rich was going out as I was coming in, so we've met before.
Okay.
Pleasure.
Scott, you want to introduce yourself?
Scott Hunter. I'm a, I was a young boy in town and joined the commission about getting close to a year ago. And just a lifelong resident of the town. Nice to meet you. Yeah, good to see you too.
Rich, my name's Pasquale Izzo. I go by Lino. I am, I guess newer to Woodbridge. I moved here in 2009. I live here with my wife and two kids. And I've been on the fire commission now for about three years, I think.
Nice to meet you.
Very good. Do we have me, Karen Kravis, lived in Woodbridge for whatever 23 minus six is, 17 years and been on the fire commission for six years, right? Ish?
Longer than that.
Longer?
It seems longer than that, right?
Yes, it does. Yeah. And I was on the beacher board before that, a lawyer in New Haven. At Sussman Duffy and Segaloff. So welcome. Is that everybody?
Thank you.
Okay.
And then we have Tina.
Tina.
Oh, give me Tina O'Connor. Probably know my husband. He was in the PD in New Haven for a while and he was US marshal. So I think you know him, John, but that's it.
Nice to meet you, Tina.
Nice to meet you, Rich.
Okay. All right. That's it for the chairman's report. Current financial statements.
You're on mute.
I am.
Does everybody have the financial statement? They should have got an email to you.
Yeah, it was included in the agenda.
All right. So just a couple of key points. And it's, we're okay under the budget. I'm going to get to a couple of issues that we have under the chief's report regarding the budget. But overall, we're okay, but I'll let you know some of the things that have come up in the past couple of weeks. So the financial report is okay right now.
Okay. Anybody have any questions? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, good. Okay. All right. So no questions, right? Chiefs report.
So my report. We just had truck or treat at the firehouse. It was a successful event. It wasn't as busy as we normally have it. I think it's due to the fact of a lot of people asking, there were no fireworks this year, but we had a couple of technicalities and some problems. We couldn't shoot the fire, we can't shoot the fireworks off where we normally shoot them because there's a dog park there and they don't, they don't want us to shoot fireworks off in the dog park. And it just so happens to be, we were shooting them off for years. And during COVID, I guess the board of selectmen agreed to allow the dog park into that location. And now we have an issue where we cannot shoot them off there anymore, but we'd like to move it, but we really can't. And maybe Joe could speak on that because we have to be so many feet from all the roads, from Beecher Road, Center Road, Oak Hill, and the actual firehouse where the spectators are. So really X marks a spot. So we'll work on that for next year and try to come up with a plan to be able to shoot them, I guess. If not, fireworks might be completely done. I don't really have another suggestion here. And it's too bad because we usually get three to 4,000 people at the event. And the fireworks are a big draw along with truck or treat and everything else. So is a really good event and community based. It's probably the biggest event as in town to do.
Is there an opportunity to request that the dog park be closed for certain hours so that it can accommodate fireworks?
Yeah. So what we normally do is we usually shut the Fitzgerald property down at 12 o'clock. The day of, we're shooting the fireworks because we have to, we have to load the firework shells. We have to bring the, the tubes in. And then they have to load them into the tubes, the fireworks into the tubes, and it has to get inspected. So we usually do that about, Joe, correct me if I'm wrong, about two o'clock. So once they set the tubes up around noon, we set them up at two and the dog park usually, and the Fitzgerald property doesn't reopen until the next day around 12 o'clock. So it gives us time the next morning to go and clean up all the the shells from the fireworks, break them up, throw them out, get rid of them and keep, keep the area clean. So I guess part of the issue is that. And also, I guess the color, when the firework explodes overhead, the coloring of the firework, like the grit comes down. And I guess what I'm being told is it can get the dogs sick. I haven't personally heard about that, but that's what I've been told this year. And so we don't really have a better suggestion what we can do here, whether that be wet the grass down after, take the fire truck over and spray it down. And maybe that will dilute it so the dogs don't get sick. But we're trying to do what we can do so we can keep this event going strong.
All right.
It is a safe event though. Normally we have anywhere between three and 4,000 people, sometimes more.
All right. Well, just let's keep the conversation going. Let us know how the commission can support you and trying to find a way to keep doing that.
Okay.
Okay. What else you got for chief's report?
Apparatus report, engine two and engine three went out for service. They came back. They're okay. Minor repairs, nothing major. Like last year, we, we were having major repairs. The next trucks that go out are going to be the tankers. Those are going out in the next couple of weeks. And those will come back. We'll start doing the rest of the trucks for repair maintenance machine. Basically the annual service that we have to do on those trucks. So that's apparatus report. Also, talking about apparatus, the new engine nine that we ordered two years ago. We're going out the end of this month, three of us on the, on the truck committee to look at the truck out in Minnesota. As long as everything looks good and it's to what, to the spec. Usually there's a couple of things that they have to fix and that's normal on, on most trucks. Once they do that, the truck will get driven from Minnesota back to Connecticut or back to Mass to their shop to do some odds and ends. Basically dealer prep items. And then we'll have the truck, hopefully we'll have the truck. I'm hoping by sometime the beginning of January, we'll get it in service shortly after that. And, and engine nine will be leaving when that new truck comes in. The steep grant. The town applied for a steep grant for the storage building slash training facility out back. That was approved. It came up, the state approved that for $500,000. The town accepted the grant at the last meeting. And Tony Genovese is working on all the paperwork associated along with that. And the, the construction documents are completed. Those are going to be going out to bid, the foundation, let me just start over. I'm sorry, the foundation part went out the bid, the bid came back. The board of selectmen awarded the bid and work is already commenced in the backyard to start the prep work and the actual foundation, the digging for the foundation and the concrete work is going to commence on November 20th, which is about a week and a half away. So we're moving forward. So we'll have that, we'll have that completed hopefully by the time it gets cold. So we don't have to spend additional monies to heat the concrete so it doesn't freeze. So I think we're still in a good spot to get that completed. And the bid document for the actual structure is going out on Monday. It looks like Tony's just finishing up the paperwork. We just got it back from the architect, David Stein, Silver Petroselli, this morning. And right now I can tell you the bid, if you give me a minute, is going to be due back on. Give me one second. I'm sorry. I think it's going to be due back on December 12th. So we'll get the bids back December 12th, and then the board of selectmen have a meeting December 13th. And if we don't, if we can't figure it out before the 13th, we'll probably, they'll probably call for a special meeting to hopefully approve the bid and award the bid to the contractor that's going to build the shed slash training. So that is moving forward and that's good.
Do you want to talk about the conference?
Sure. So we didn't go last year. We've been the last few years before that. And it's actually good. This is the FDIC convention. If you go online, you can look at it. This is a big fire expo conference, training deal that we normally go to. This is where all the state of the art, this is where everything in the fire service is basically, you can go, put your hands on, touch it, demo it. And also there's a lot of training sessions that come along with it. It's a big conference and expo. So the cost of it with hotel, airfare, the convention with the training and everything, it's going to cost us roughly $5,000. Little over $5,000. And then you have, then you have ancillaries, like some food and stuff, which I think two years ago came to maybe a thousand dollars. That would come out of our training budget. So I like to, I think this is a really good thing, especially we need to start looking forward to a aerial truck that, that the association purchased back in, I think it was 2018, 2017, 2018. That's we, we, when we bought it, the older truck was a 1976. And it was way past its useful life. This truck is a 1992 and it's past its useful life. So we're looking at that and that's a pretty hefty price tag. And what's nice about going out there is you can actually see the trucks, touch the trucks, look at sizes of the trucks, see what they're capable of, see what they have out there. So when we start to bid our truck, we can actually know what, what we're really looking at and the options that we want. So when we look at a truck like that, we're probably in the area, probably about a $2 million truck right now. So this would, this benefits the town also. But it is, it is a nonstop show. It usually goes from like eight in the morning to six at night and you're on the floor basically entire time or at a training session the entire time. So what I'm looking for you guys is I had to, I had to book the tickets because they came available and I had to order them to get the reduced cost. So I need to get approval from you guys to be able, to be able to go to this conference. So.
Okay. So tell us, tell us what, tell us what that 5,000 or up to $6,000 that.
It would be three people to go to the conference for hotel, airfare and the convention itself.
Okay. And who, you go, who else goes?
I'm thinking about taking the chief engineer, Jim Code, and possibly RJ Code, who's done a lot of radio work for us and some other stuff. So that's who I'm looking at right now.
Okay.
How long is, how long is the conference for?
So the conference, we would fly out on a Wednesday morning and return either late Friday night or early Saturday morning. So it's basically a Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and you come home Saturday morning or Friday night, depending on what we, what we can do here.
And it's, we've already budgeted for this, correct?
Yeah. So that would come out of our training line item. So we're okay in that line.
Where is that training line item? I was just curious.
So the training line item is.
Number.
Give me a second and they will find it for you.
Yeah, I was just.
54630.
546. So it's only, it's 20%?
Yeah. Yeah. So we're, we're, we're good. And this is, this is a huge benefit.
What does FDIC stand for? Not the bank insurance.
What else does it stand for?
Yeah, right. What else does it?
Hang on, I have to look it up.
I was just curious if.
I want to just get the correct word for you.
I bet you F stands for fire.
I would think so.
Fire.
FDIC International.
Oh, is that the standards group?
No.
The standard for firefighting and stuff? No?
No, that's different. I could get you what that stands for.
Yeah, I was just curious.
I've never really been asked that.
I was gonna play along on TV.
But if you go online, you can see how big it actually is. It covers basically, it's the Indiana convention center plus it's Lucas Oil Stadium. So they're two big, two big convention centers. There's over 1,100 vendors there, 1,100 different people. So you get to see.
Fire Department Instructors Conference.
There you go.
FDIC is Fire Department Instructors Conference.
Oh, there you go.
There you go. You gotta love Google.
There you go.
Thank you, Tina and Google. All right. So do, can some, I will entertain a motion to approve the expenditure of up to $6,000 for three members of the fire department to go to the Indiana convention in April.
I'll make a motion.
But Stephanie seconded it.
Oh, Stephanie made it. Who seconded?
I made it and I think Scott did.
Oh, I'm sorry. Stephanie made it. Scott, did you second it?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion passes unanimously. Okay. Activity report, Assistant Chief Pacowitz.
Oh, hang on, I'm not done yet.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry about that. All right. The other thing is, so under the budget, when I talk to you, we'll talk about it on my report. We had a couple of issues over the last couple of months. One being our S2 control system that does all the door access controls. We have an issue with the power supply and we needed to replace it, meaning some of the doors were failing and didn't work and the power supply went bad. So this goes back to the conversation we had months ago and we continue to have with the town and with UI over this microgrid. The buildings taken, when they use the microgrid, we're taking big surges. And we're not the only ones. Amity High School has been taking surges. They've been losing cameras, just like we've been losing cameras. The PD has taken some surges with this microgrid. And every time, if you remember back in December, we had the storm and the mini split system in the IT room went bad. And that was like, I don't know, it was like $10,000 to repair. So we still have an issues. I think it's in our benefit to, and we had to replace, we have to replace that. And the cost is, it was 625 for the service call and it's roughly $2,500 to replace the power supply. Now, these aren't, I'm not saying these are big numbers where we have to worry about, but what happens is over the, over the course of a year, these numbers start adding up to five, seven, $10,000. And we're not budgeted for stuff like this blowing up. So moving forward in our capital budget, we're looking to do possibly a brand new, because we have battery backup at the firehouse, but what's happened is now, since it's 13, 14 years old alone with the building, the surge has been going through the battery. So the surge protection is actually not good anymore. So I'm having somebody, we're going to have somebody look at, see what it would cost to put surge protection on the entire building because we can't keep taking these big surges because every time we do it, we end up breaking something, whether it be a camera server, cameras, power supplies, computers, air conditioners. We're just having, we're having big problems here. And we're trying to get off the microgrid. And I know it's an ongoing conversation with UI, the state, the town. But we're all having these issues. So I know there's going to be a meeting coming up. I talked to Tony. And we're trying to figure out what our next steps are because this is just, it's not clean power where we just can't shut down every single time the microgrid wants to come on.
All right. Keep us posted.
Another big thing that we're going to be sending a memo over to Tony, to the board of selectmen and board of finances. The, we had a boiler, we had a heat problem at the firehouse last week where the heat would not come on. It was an air tank associated with the boiler that went bad and corroded. And basically there was video where you could put your finger through the tank. So it wasn't holding air. We couldn't make heat. And they had to do it on an emergency repair and they actually stayed here until 10 o'clock Friday night to repair this. And they had to get the part out of Boston and the cost is roughly $10,000 to repair, to make the repair and to fix the system at the firehouse. So we have heat and hot water because we didn't have any for two days and the building started getting really cold. So after talking to Tony, Tony said, just let's pay the overtime and get it fixed because I didn't know if we could go all weekend. He didn't want to take the chance of going all weekend. So we decided just to get it fixed because we needed to get heat back up and running and we needed it, hot water. Going on with the power surge. We had a tree come down on Center Road, knocked the power out to the firehouse. I think we, I'm pretty sure we went back on microgrid. We had an elevator issue with Conan. I think we, I'm pretty sure we went back on microgrid, we had an elevator issue with Kone. Uh, where the elevator stopped working. And at first, we thought we possibly blew up the main control board of the elevator, we've done that before. That's like a ten or twelve thousand dollar fix. Um, what happened is the elevator actually ended up going into sleep mode and they had to come out and fix that. And that was eight twenty five oh three. So when I say. Twenty five hundred dollars, now we're talking eight twenty five, some of these numbers start creeping up and when we get toward. I don't know, maybe March, April, we have to be careful because we really didn't budget for any of these fixes. I mean, you budget for breaks here and there, but. Well, we're having multiple breaks at a time because of a power surge, we need to fix that surge. Uh, protection issue.
Okay, thank you for making us aware of it, let us know if there's anything you need from us. I, I'm unaware of the conversations that were going on in the town about getting off the microgrid, but if that's something.
We wanna, we wanna get off the microgrid, because right now the microgrid is not working properly for us and it's. It's costing us a lot of money, or it's gonna cost the insurance company a lot of money, so. An item of twenty five hundred dollars doesn't really pay to put toward the insurance, because they're deductible aside. If we end up blowing something eight, ten, twelve thousand, then we end up putting it through the insurance, which we've done in the past.
Okay. Anybody have any questions or comments about that? Okay, um, can we move on to the activity report?
Sure.
Okay, Assistant Chief Pacowitz.
Alright, so. Since our last meeting, um, in August, we did thirty two calls, we had three fires, thirteen um hazardous conditions. Three service calls, three good intent and ten false calls. And that um, seven of those calls were motor vehicle accidents. Uh, for September, we did thirty six calls. We had three fires, we had two overpressure rupt- um, overpressure rupture explosion, no heat, no fire. Um, we had. Fourteen hazardous condition calls, two calls for service, fifteen false alarms. And in that breakdown, there were eight NVAs. And last month in October, we ran twenty seven calls, uh, one fire. We had ten hazardous condition, no fire, three service calls, three good intent and ten false alarms. And in that breakdown, there were eight motor vehicle accidents, we've been staying pretty consistent with that. Seven to, seven to nine motor vehicles the last few months, so those numbers are starting to creep back down again.
Okay, anybody have any questions or comments? Thank you, Ted, um, Fire Marshal's report.
Yes, we got the uh new computer system, so. The only way I can get the report to print was from the time we started to today. So we gotta call up and get that straightened out next week, but I did a hundred and eighty inspections in that four month time. We did fire prevention for uh seven hundred children at uh nine different locations and. Nate Case was a big help, he helped me in uh eight of the nine. Uh, places, we also had an uh, a Porsche burn up in someone's driveway. Uh, on Ansonia Road on the twenty sixth of September. Uh, we brought the accelerant sniffing K nine in, he didn't detect anything. And uh. When you run the VIN number, the car comes back to nobody. We had it impounded at the police department, it comes back to nobody, the police department said, we're, you know, we're done with it. From my end, it, you know, nothing I can do, we released the car, went. Back to the uh tow truck company, it's up to them what they do with it from there, but other than that, that was it.
Okay, anybody have any questions? Thank you, Joe. Okay, the next item on the agenda is correspondence, I don't believe we have any Tina or Chief.
No, we have, no, I, I put that in the packet, there's four pieces of correspondence.
Oh, okay, oh, I see, I'm sorry, um. Okay, do you mind reading them for us?
So the first note was a note from. Uh, Mrs. Simpson to Fire Marshal Kapucci, thanking him for checking the CO levels of, of the house earlier this week. And for a new monitor. And she wrote, he is very reassuring to know I am safe at home, that was back in September. And then the next note was. Another resident. Very. Hilly Vine, thanking for your assistance with our water emergency on Country Club Drive. And they also provided a nice donation to the association, which is very nice.
Mm-hmm.
And the next note was from the Woodbridge Rec Department, this is back in October for. Service for the twenty twenty three road race, your time and service make it possible to hold this popular community event. Uh, and it's uh, during the summer months flyers are made and printed up, Woodbridge Rec posted on the website. Proceeds from this road race help provide food and fuel to those in need, so they. They count on the fire department every year and every year the fire department comes back and helps out. And then lastly, a note from the Orange Volunteer Fire Association. Uh, from a woman who, there was actually a fire. She's uh, Ted could probably help out with this too, she, it was, she worked for the uh, Orange Fire Department, but the fire was actually at her house.
Yeah, she's a member of their, their department.
So they called uh, Orange Fall Dust for Mutual Aid. So, and what they wrote was instead of, this is what's so important, what we do. Instead of enjoying a beautiful summer evening, many members of your department responded to this call for additional help. She is grateful for your department's tireless efforts and quick response prevents further damage to her home. Thank you for your dedication and hard work, so that was back in August. That's pretty nice.
Excellent, thank you. Okay, any questions or comments? Okay, approval of the August meeting minutes, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the uh, August meeting minutes. That was Scott.
Thank you, Scott.
Lino second.
Okay, any discussion? Any changes? Okay, um, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstain? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously.
Except for probably. Our new member.
Oh, yes, Rich, probably abstain, cause you weren't, cause you weren't here.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Yeah.
And was anybody else not here at the August meeting minutes, um, August meeting, or everybody was here?
I think everybody was there, as I, my memory.
Yes, okay.
There's us four.
Yes, yep, okay, very good. Okay, um, our next meeting is scheduled for December fourth, we talked about that at the August meeting. Um, instead of having tried to um. Um. You know, with the holidays and everything, just to have a meeting on December fourth, is, does that work for everyone?
Yes, for me.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Yes.
Alright, okay, very good.
So at that meeting, just to let everybody know, we'll be presenting the capital budget to you guys for approval.
Okay.
Is that an annual Sean, or is that a multi-year?
That's the multi-year, so we do it annually and it's a six-year capital plan. And then uh, also we'll be presenting the beginning of January. To you guys is the operating budget. Um, for next year.
Is there any material, is there a vote at that meeting?
There's a vote at both meetings.
Is there anything we need in advance to give us some time?
Yes, what we'll do is, we'll, we're gonna, we'll send it out in the packet and then uh, we'll talk about each item at the next meeting. And go forward on that.
Okay, thanks, I'm, I'm new to this, but.
Yep.
So it's Tina, it's due to the town, to the fire department on the eighth. So it's important that we have this meeting on the fourth, even if we have to do it by Zoom, just so you.
Yeah, they, they agreed, they're gonna, they're gonna be able to do it, do you guys wanna do it by Zoom or do you wanna do it in person?
I think I wanna do it by Zoom and make sure that we, you know, um, you know, have enough attendance.
Works for me, whatever, whatever the group wants to do.
I mean, we can always change it right before the agenda goes out, we can just check in with everybody, if everyone can do it in person and wants to. Then we'll do that, I just don't wanna run into any more uh trouble with. Attendance. Okay, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Alright, we are adjourned, thank you, everybody.
Who made the motions, the first motion?
Lino. Lino.
Lino, thank you.
Stephanie seconded it.
Yep, got it.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you, goodnight.